Good afternoon, everyone. The special meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, April 24, 2023 at 3:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Hamada. Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Santinas.
Here. Sir, motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Hamada.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, second is by Councilmember Sanchez to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Hamada. Without objection, that will be the order. Item three, public comments. Mr. Stewart.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3A, the public may address the city council on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on a listed item should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the city council.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item before the public hearing? Seeing none? Okay.
Hello, good afternoon. And just kind of looking through some of the paperwork that we're going to be addressing today, there's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of data in here that I'm sure that's going to get hashed over back and forth quite a bit. Just in taking a quick glance of this, when you see 36 positive exits for three years of being in business, almost three years, it seems like that's an area for improvement. And it's a little disappointing when you look at how much is spent on that, that that's what we're getting, is 36 positive exits. My one question that I'd like to know would be, to compare to Salvation Army, which we, I believe, have a facility in Bellflower, do their percentages match up to this, or are they more successful on their positive exits? And then I'll just wait to hear the study group on this, and as you guys go through this, I'm sure it'll be very thorough, but when you look at this, you see a lot of expenses and stuff, and I'm sure you're going to take a look at that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Okay, moving on to item 4A, Mr. Stewart.
So this, we're talking about the, as Mr. Bremer indicated, we're talking about the homeless shelter, and it's been two years since we've opened it, essentially. We have a couple of decision points to get to today, and one is, of course, the review of the performance that we've had, what we've learned. Two is, we need to make a decision whether or not we want to carry this project forward. Three, how would we want to fund it? What service do we want to provide? And four, do we want to go out to bid and maybe seek other bids from other vendors on this thing? So we have a lot of presentation to make to you. Travis is going to start it off, and we have folks here from Mercy House who can answer any questions you might have, so.
Okay.
Travis.
All right. Mr. Seis.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, and good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. So as brief background on the New Hope Shelter, the city conducted a citizen satisfaction survey in 2018, which showed homelessness as the city's primary problem. So in an effort to address this problem, the city subsequently entered into a settlement agreement on September 23, 2019, with Orange County Catholic Worker at All. And under this agreement, the city agreed to complete a plan for the location and construction of a temporary shelter. The city was first to sign on with Judge David O. Carter's order as a method of addressing homelessness in the city. On May 20, 2020, the Bellflower New Hope Shelter opened, which consisted of encampment cleanups that day and the first of outreach operations. So since then, New Hope has served approximately 244 homeless individuals with 203 program exits. The positive exits you see there consist of exits to housing, and this is such as permanent and temporary housing or transitional housing, and the negative exits are exits to either like jail or prison. So currently, the city contracts with Mercy House Living Centers to operate New Hope, and there are about 25 daily Mercy House staff shifts at the shelter. The total time is about 1,064 hours worked each week by Mercy House, and then Mercy House additionally subcontracts for its security services at New Hope. So they have AM, PM shift, overnight shift, so this is a 24/7 operation. So the current agreement with Mercy House, it's set to expire on May 20, 2023, which is next month, and the budget is approximately $2.24 million for the current one-year term. Mercy House is seeking to extend that agreement with the city through June 30, 2023, and this would be just to coincide with the fiscal year. This would add about an additional $187,000 for the additional one month and 11 days. So this next slide has a few key points for consideration. So the initial four-year term of the settlement agreement, it ends actually this September 23, 2023, and there is an automatic four-year extension in the agreement, which would extend it to September 23, 2027. So the total annual cost to operate the shelter is about $2.5 million, so this includes Mercy House's services along with the building rent and utilities. Another point to consider is the lack of available permanent and transitional housing in LA County. So Mercy House has indicated it has been difficult to find available housing units for New Hope Shelter guests. So for additional consideration, the city did apply for a one-time county grant to help offset the city general funding for the shelter, and the county has indicated that it desires to grant the city the $1.46 million. However, the city would need to open up shelter beds to the cities of Artesia, Lakewood, and Paramount, should New Hope's occupancy drop below 95%. This would require some modifications to the shelter program and would require coordination with these three neighboring cities. Lastly, there is some vacant space in the back of New Hope that is available for potential additional beds, if there's a desire to increase New Hope's bed capacity. So as such, as Mr. Stewart mentioned, the recommendation is to provide direction to the city manager regarding the city council's desire to continue operations at New Hope and make modifications to the operations at New Hope and consider options regarding New Hope's bed capacity. So that completes the presentation. We have staff along with Mercy House, CityNet, and Kingdom Causes are available to help answer any questions, and there was a shelter report as well in the attachments to the staff report.
Okay. Any question of Mr. Seis?
Yeah, if he could answer. Yes, if he could.
Go ahead, Councilmember Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just on the unknown exits, are those people that enter the shelter and just walk away and never come back, never heard of them, or somebody, or they seek housing and they just disappear?
I'm going to let Mercy House answer that question for us.
Yeah, come on.
My name is Timothy Nguyen. I'm the chief program officer for Mercy House. And to address your question about unknown exits, an unknown exit is an exit for which we haven't, we're not able to collect the destination information. Most of the time, it's exactly what you said, it's somebody who leaves the shelter and doesn't return without communicating to us that they're leaving. We don't know if they have pursued it or successfully entered another housing opportunity, or if they've just decided the shelter isn't the right space for them and they've left.
Those are people that just leave the shelter, it's not somebody that's been placed somewhere else that disappears?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Whenever possible, if we're, you know, if we know someone's going to another place, we want to be able to report that, because most of the time, if someone's getting in housing or another program, that's a success for us.
If somebody was at the shelter and there was an unknown exit of an individual, is there any times where six months later, you pick them up, they get picked up again and come to the shelter? They're in the area still?
That's totally possible. So clients, if they exit like that, they would be eligible for return. I don't know for a fact, but I would guess yes.
But we have no data on that, how many revolve?
That's a question I can ask my data team to look into. It's certainly not impossible to find, but it's, without looking into it, I can't answer.
In the future, I could think that would be, you know, some nice information to have if, you know, in a given year, you have a troublesome shelter person that enters a shelter three different times, that was something we would like to know, I think.
I will say, if it's, if performance here is comparable to performance in other geographies where we serve, in Orange County, we are able to query against the HMAS system for the unknown exits. That means I'm able to ask the question of these, let's say, 75 people who, or 100 people who exited unknown, how many of them pop up back in the system somewhere else? And that's a, that's a report that I'm able to generate because of the HMAS operator in Orange County allows us to run that report. I think we get about, you know, it depends from year to year, but somewhere, somewhere close to, you know, between 50 and 75% of folks who disappear, who have unknown exits, they don't reappear. So that means they're either going somewhere else or resolving somewhere else. I don't think we have the ability to ask for that report in this geography. Yeah, with us.
Thank you.
Tim, can you sign in, please?
Oh, yes, of course.
That was my only question at the moment.
Okay, all right.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Coops.
Sir, what, they mentioned your position with Mercy House. What is, are you the CEO?
I'm the chief program officer, so that makes me the executive who oversees our programs.
So you report to one other person, or how many people are above you?
So I report to our, there's a CEO and a COO above.
So how many Mercy House-type scenarios are there that are you in charge of?
If we're talking about just the shelter programs, we have, we have, depends on what stage of implementation, so we're starting new programs in Arizona right now, but we have about 11 shelters that are operating.
That are similar to ours?
Correct.
Do you find the data that we're providing from our shelter commensurate with what you have in other shelters?
So I will say, I think the length of time that we have our guests here in Bellflower feels about comparable. I think there have been other, other cities where we have a closer partnership with, or a better ability to align housing resources. We've had a lot of like room key projects turn into home key projects, which have created an influx of housing placements.
In LA County?
Not in LA County.
So you have, transitional housing is more plentiful in Orange County than LA County? Is that a safe assumption?
Not transitional, but permanent supportive.
Permanent support. But either term would allow for you to have a more positive outgoing on a person leaving?
Yeah. I think if there was more landing spots for folks to leave, then we would have more flow through the shelter space.
You know, and I share the viewpoint of the citizen who gave testimony about how many positives we had with 38 after several years, and, you know, that's kind of disheartening, but we're all new into this business, so I was trying to track with you what it is that we can expect.
So I will say, 38 out of the, the full picture of 200 is, you know, 15% of folks moving out of homelessness into the streets that we serve. Obviously, we'd love to see a bigger pipeline and definitely believe that if there was more, more permanent supportive housing, more, more housing resources to match them to, we would get that flow. I think that we've run into kind of bottleneck at trying to get those resources from, from, out of LSA to get those rapid rehousing and permanent supportive matches to clients that are staying in the shelter.
Right. It's a follow-up to that. Would you have similar success just off the street, or is there more success coming out of the shelter into permanent supportive housing?
There is some success just off the street, but we definitely get more success with when folks are in the shelter, because we're able to work with them. When you're engaging with folks on the streets, it may be, there's a lot of time between contacts. You can lose track of folks, and it's just, it's harder to, to create a housing plan and execute a housing plan in that, in that environment.
When we started this project several years ago, if memory serves, if you have a client or a homeless person who's moved into the facility, every 90 days, they're examined as to whether or not they're making improvements in their situation, be it drug, be it rehabilitation, housing, employment, there's a whole bunch of different things that, I assume that that's still the case, because when I look at how many people have moved in and it became their permanent home, I'm wondering how many are actually being examined every 90 days to find out whether or not they can transition back into a normal life setting.
So that's, that's a real important question we're asking about our long-stayers, right? So the design of the shelters for folks to be in there, ideally 90 days or less, and we know that when folks stay in shelters longer than that, that's not good for them, right? The shelter space is.
Not good for anybody.
That's meant for temporary, a temporary place, not a permanent place.
Right. But it's, for 200 people, it's turned into a permanent place. 125, yeah. But, and maybe the transitional housing is the problem, or whether or not we're able to get the kind of activities to promote them in the normal habitation, I don't know.
So I know something that we're making a real concerted effort to as an agency, in which we do want to apply to this program as well, is a, is a really directed approach to those long-stayers. So what we can do is, we can generate a list of who's in the shelter, who's been there the longest, and really target our efforts.
Let me follow up. I think that, I want to clarify a couple things. So right now, a perm population, we have 25 or 26 that have been there a year or more on that shelter. Is that roughly the number?
I don't know. I have to take a look at the report.
Yeah, I believe it's about half.
Right. So of that number that there, are those people, I think what Mr. Coops is asking, are those people being evaluated whether or not they can ever find permanent supportive housing, or is this just, we're going to warehouse them for X amount of time?
I'll say, we're definitely working with them, and we want to, it's hard to make a plan when there's not a landing spot for them to plan to go to.
Yeah. Is there a permanent supporting process now among LSA, or anybody else for that matter, where those people could go, or is this just a dead end right now for that sort of housing?
It's definitely hard. I don't want to say it's a dead end for them, but I don't want to say, I don't want to overpromise and say we're going to have a 90-day plan for each one.
Well, let me ask you, just in this community, in the Bellflower community, roughly, I mean, how many avenues are there for people to find permanent supportive housing out of the group that's currently being housed at the shelter?
Very few. I think that we haven't had more than a handful of permanent supportive housing matches out of, out of the shelter since we started.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's part of the issue, is that we went into this process thinking that LSA would follow suit with some kind of reasonably good program for permanent supportive housing, and failed miserably, quite frankly. And now we're kind of left picking up the pieces on that, and that's been an impediment to our process.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, kind of follow up on, piggyback off of those two questions. It was Timothy, right?
Yes, correct.
First off, thank you for being here. My question to kind of piggyback off of them and to rephrase that, really, out of the percentage that you have or that have been in the shelter for a long period of time, what is the willingness and ability for them to actually move forward into some kind of a permanent supportive housing solutions? Is that something that they are capable of? And is it just that we, as a county or region, lack the ability to support that at this point in time?
So the, is there a, so they're still, they still remain in the shelter? So that tells me they're willing to continue to talk to us. Our navigators are continuing to meet with them. So there's a willingness to have that conversation, and we're going to continue to do this process where we're, we're going to reevaluate and discuss with them, what are your plans, what are your options? If we run into a place where our clients are unwilling, or where we've been able to provide, here's, you know, you've had three opportunities to move out, but you're deciding not to move out, then we have a different conversation with those guests.
What is that conversation?
Conversation with a guest like that is, we've provided you a service, we've given you lots of opportunities to, to move on, and it's time for, you know, you need to take an opportunity, or because you're taking up a spot for someone else, you could take those opportunities.
That's interesting. Does that happen a lot, or is that a, is that a familiar thing among the 25 or 6 that are there now? That they've got opportunities to move, they just didn't?
That's, that's not something that's happening often, no.
It's not?
Yeah.
Okay. But, okay, that's curious.
It's, we have incurred that. I can think of a handful of cases across the programs that I oversee, and it's, you know, it's, it's a time for us to, it's a multidisciplinary conversation with that client, with the other service providers we're partnering with. What is stopping you from taking these opportunities? You know, what are you, what are you afraid of, and how do we support you to move on? Because it's not appropriate to continue to stay in the shelter forever.
All right. I have another question. In the, in the staff, in the report here that you provided us, I think there's, I'm looking for something about employment. How many of your guests are employed at this point?
I don't know the answer to that question, how many of our guests are employed. I know that, that it's not uncommon for guests to have employment, and, you know, we do provide.
Well, I'm asking the question because it begs me to, because I used to work for transitional housing.
Yeah.
And, and I think what had happened here is we're housing our guests.
Yes.
256 days staying in the shelter. I mean, that's, that's too much of a stretch, because traditionally, in transitional housing, either you stay for 18 months to two years. After that, you move on. You need to have a program, but it seems like, because our model is shelter, so there's no expectation for them to learn new trades, get education, they just basically sit there, being fed day in and day out. That really pains me, because we're paying, we're paying for this out of our tax, tax, tax dollars, and, and not knowing how many are working. So even if, let's say, we find them a supportive, permanent supportive housing, how can they pay for this rental if there's no income? So I think one of the things that we need to kind of focus on is, are they, do they have a job? Okay. That's one, one issue that I have. The other thing is, I, looking at these charts that you provided, veteran status, we have two. Are they still there?
I'm not sure. They might, they might be, I know that there are a lot of veterans.
Let me cut you off. Can you find out? Because it really pains me to have a veteran living in a shelter, because there are so many programs, starting from the Obama administration, to make sure that all veterans are taken care of. Why do we still have veterans in the shelter? That to me is a disgrace.
I'm hearing that the veterans are no longer in the shelter.
Okay, all right. Very good, thank you, because that's a disgrace to have a veteran in the shelter.
Certainly, our first thing we would do upon finding a veteran who was in the shelter would be to try to connect them to those services that are available. So I know that HUD, VASH is robust, right? And so when we do have veterans, you know, the first thing we want to do is see, you know, what was their status, and how can we connect them to VA to move them on?
Okay, so I think I'm going to follow up on the question about our, our plans going forward. So if we continue this for the next four years, if we extend the agreement, our settlement agreement for the next four years, what do you plan on doing? What's going to be done differently?
So that depends a lot on the direction we receive from council.
What do you, what do you suggest to us?
What do we suggest? So I would like to see, so the shelter, I think, is an important component of the system, right? But if there's any way to put your thumb on the scale to create more of those opportunities for folks to come out, I know there's conversations about, you know, Bellflower developing their own permanent supportive housing. I think that would go a long way to creating flow out of the shelter. I think that there's, there's a need to put pressure, if possible, on, on, you know, on LSA to align more resources to this SPA, so that we can create the flow through the system.
Well, realistically, our, we're working on our own supportive, supportive housing, but it's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to happen anymore. I mean, at best, it can happen within two years, two years. Okay, so in the meantime, what's our plan? What are you, what are you suggesting to us?
I would suggest that we continue with the creation of the system that I believe is working. The, the goal of creating the shelter system is to address the issues of homelessness on the streets of Bellflower. And from all the reports that I've, I've heard, the perception of the presence of homelessness, the ability of the city to respond to, to the homeless experience on the street, and our ability to provide them with shelter and connect them to whatever is available is continue to operate successfully.
Well, I think, but again, I'm going to help you on this issue. The main issue is, they're not moving into permanent supportive housing.
So.
So how do we address that issue? I mean, the shelter is a great idea. It's a great solution, because one of the things that we're proud of here, as far as I'm concerned, we don't have homeless encampment in city parks. That is very visible to me.
Yeah.
Okay, and like before, sidewalks, there's maybe a few, but not as rampant as, let's say, two years ago. Okay? So I think we have accomplished that, but I need, but I think we need to move forward and address this issue of how do we move those in the shelter to more permanent supportive housing?
I, I agree, and I'm trying to, trying to understand and answer the question within the scope of this conversation.
Does the permanent supportive housing exist within the ecosystem here for the homeless in this area? And if it does, can you access it?
I'm not aware that there's a lot of permanent supportive housing in this ecosystem. I think that there could be other, so there are interventions that are less, less intense than permanent supportive housing.
Which is what he's asking.
Like rapid rehousing, homeless prevention interventions, and I think those could be more aligned to this SPA, that we could access those. A lot of the placements that we get are through, through that type of an assistance, because there isn't that permanent supportive housing intervention. I think that if, so if you want to improve this, the flow of clients through the shelter, I don't know that there's necessarily a change to the shelter that needs to take place. I think there's a change to what we can offer outside of the shelter in, in creating those landing spots, or maybe lowering.
That's what we're, that's what we're looking for.
So if there was.
So what can you do?
If there was.
What can we do?
So if there was a resource for, for rental assistance for the homeless, for example, if we could pay, you know, deposits in three to six months of rent to get folks out of the shelter, and so then, once they're out and they, you know, they're working on their stability, they're getting their employment, they're getting their benefits, those types of things to maintain it, then we can, we can create another pipeline out of the shelter.
Reclaiming the city pays the rent for these people coming out?
Well, I think it would be more, it would be appropriate if we could align those resources that are available through LSA to SPA 7.
There's a billion dollars a year going to LSA.
Right.
I don't really feel the need to subsidize that anymore than we currently do. So, I mean, that's, that's not a tenable solution. Here's my question, like what he may be asking, and I'm just going to, I'm going to be the bad guy and ask it. What if you gave him a 90-day window? You come in, you stay 90 days, you're going to get out. What happens to him if we cut him loose after 90 days?
So if we have a hard stop at 90 days, what's likely to happen is people will come and stay 90 days, and they'll exit them, and then they'll be back where they started, but less likely to reengage. And so if we are exiting folks without a landing spot, then we're going to find ourselves back in the position where folks are on the street.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
It sounds like, what I'm hearing here is, pretty much, the shelter's doing the best that it can. It's the region, right? The lack of transitional housing, the lack of permanent supportive housing, the lack of others in our community. I think we, as Bellflower, we have done a tremendous job of building a shelter and doing the first step, but I think we're, you know, the region is lacking everything else. So I don't know necessarily that the shelter could do anything, is what I'm hearing, to improve.
We're asking him hard policy questions. He doesn't have answers to. I get that.
We're asking for suggestions, how can we make it better? It seems like there's, there's nothing much we can do within the shelter itself.
And I'm not disagreeing with him, I just, it's a matter of who funds it, right?
Right, exactly. Where would mini homes fall in the whole realm of supportive housing?
So I, I've seen a successful implementation of, of like micro homes for, for use in, in shelter as well. So I know that Pallet, for example, is a, is a company that sells this model of, of micro, micro homes, which you can get a shelter operator to operate that. I don't, I have to have a look behind the curtain for what other operators are providing, but.
So my question then, have, has Mercy House done something like that? And then, is that considered transitional housing? Would that be a successful exit if someone moves into a, a mini home?
So if, if someone were to exit into a transitional housing program, we would count that as a positive exit, because they're moving to the next step in, in addressing their homelessness. The transitional housing, I think there's a, there's a space for that model to be successful. I think there are, there are clients who need that longer-term intervention that's not a permanent intervention. As, as Mayor mentioned earlier, typical length of stay in a, in a transitional shelter is, you know, between a year and two years, right? So if you're planning on holding folks for two years while they have that transition, while they get that extra support, I don't know that that's the most cost-effective method to move forward, because you're, from the get-go, planning on having that extended length of stay. Now, I think there are some guests, there's a segment of guests who need that service, and for those, I absolutely want to, to get them to that service, but I think that in a world of limited resources and, and overwhelming need, there's a, there's a more efficient way to address a larger portion of the population.
Would you say that our shelter has then become a hybrid, somewhere between?
I think so. I think that's what we're dealing with now, right? So we have a shelter, because we're not able to achieve the outflow that's appropriate, we're getting folks who are staying for that longer period of time. And I, and kind of, I don't want to leave unaddressed, we are, our navigators are working with our guests to improve their income, whatever way is most appropriate for them. So if they're, uh, you know, if they need work or if they need working skills, we wanna refer them to, like, a Chrisless or another, like, job development partner. We get them interview skills, get them resume workshop, get them, you know, dressed up for an interview, that kind of stuff. So we're not, not doing those things, um, but it's not, uh, it's not a.
It's a bottleneck.
Yeah.
Uh, but if, if you look at the, um, the, the, the outcome, uh, nine permanent, uh, nine, um, exits to permanent supportive housing, I mean, out of two hundred forty-four guests we had so far, that's only four percent. So I guess, my question is, um, we have a full, we have a, um, senior, um, navigator, we have two housing navigators, we have navigation leasing agent. So what are they, what are they doing in addition to what you said earlier?
So the, they are looking to connect the clients to the resources that are available. Right, so their primary role is to, to, so they're gonna meet with a client regularly, they're gonna assess what their needs are, and they're gonna say, these are, these are, this is what we have to connect you to. So the, our, the primary tool to get to, uh, a PSH, uh, match is, uh, the coordinated entry system. And so the, on, on, and because of the, uh, the structure federally, in order for, uh, the funds that pay for the PSH to, to pay for that, they have to go through this coordinated entry system. And so, we're kind of bound to, uh, to advocating for our, our clients through that, that portal. I mean, that's why those nine PSH placements, uh, those were, those all had to go through the, the coordinated entry system, uh, in order to get placed.
And, Mr. Mayor.
And let me just finish this. I think that's kind of a very, very costly, uh, for nine permanent supportive housing exits with almost three full-time equivalents.
So the, the, those, those navigators are also what, what I think colloquially people would call a case manager. Right, so they're, they're the ones who are working with the clients and addressing levels. We're gonna make a budget, we're gonna make a plan, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna connect you to your job development, we're gonna connect you to, you know, benefits. If you, if you qualify for Med-Cal, we're gonna get you signed up, or, like, they're doing all of that work.
Okay, alright, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of to piggyback off of that and follow, what, what's the, uh, what's the partnership like with the outside, uh, entities that are supporting Mercy House? What does that look like?
Which part, outside entities, like LASSA?
LASSA, Kingdom Causes, CityNet. What, what is the role?
So I'll say, uh, we have a pretty close partnership with Kingdom Causes and CityNet, and the, our referring partners, right, because we're, we're working with them day in and day out to get, uh, you know, to get the, we tell them when the beds are available, they tell us when folks are coming in. Um, I think we've got a, an open, uh, communication, uh, and we also work kind of, uh, for kind of high-level cases, there's gonna be some case conferencing and some communications about what we can do, what we can't do. Uh, I'll say, uh, our, our navigation team are engaged in, in, like, the LASSA CES system to try to advocate for, um, for the guests that, that are there. Um, and we've had, as you can tell, uh, not outstanding success getting PSH matches, uh, through that system. Uh, we have been able to get some, uh, rapid rehousing assistance matches, but, uh, that's, again, those are not, uh, the most, uh, most frequent matches.
So, so in layman's terms, walk us through the process. Kingdom Causes, CityNet refers to Mercy House, right? You, they, you let them know how many beds you have available, they refer someone, John Doe, John Doe comes in. Who can, who starts, or who initiates from there, the case management? Who's in charge and responsible for that, for Jane Doe, getting their driver's license, getting into employment? Is it, is it that Kingdom Causes, CityNet just drop off at the door and you take over from there?
So yes, it's like, it's a warm handoff from Kingdom Causes, CityNet, they, they say, hey, here's, here's John Doe, he's coming in the shelter, I say, okay, we'll meet you at the front, and then stay in this time. He'll come in, he'll complete a, an intake, or the intake includes a, a variety of demographic informations. We'll do an assessment. We used to do VI SPADATs, I think we do a different assessment now. Um, we, when we do a collection of verification of homelessness, we'll start to collect, uh, vital documentation, um, and, and those are the elements that we need in order to access the coordinated entry system. In addition, kind of, in addition to coordinated entry, you know, we're obviously gonna, we're also gonna do that work of saying, what do you need, what, what's your housing plan? What, housing plan A is, we're gonna go through CES to get you a match. What about housing plan B? What about housing plan C? Uh, are you able to work, are you able to get on your feet? How much do you need to save? You know, where do you wanna live? Like, those, those types, that type of work. And the navigators are doing that case management work. Up until, uh, clients exit, when they exit, you know, they collect whatever information they can, they enter it in the database, um, and we say, uh, good luck. Congratulations.
Is, uh, the new, the new shelter still your only operation in LA County?
Uh, New Hope is our only operation in LA County, that's correct.
Okay. That's it for now, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, okay, thank you. Any other question for Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Dunn.
Does any of the, the housed individuals hold jobs? And they go to their work, employment during the day, and then they come back?
Yes.
To the shelter? Is, um, is it, uh, a very small portion of it? Is it ten percent? Uh, you know, I'm not actually, give me statistics, but would, you know, is there a handful? How many would you say do that?
I, I don't know at this moment, but I can definitely find out and go back to you.
I asked the question earlier.
That's the way. And then, uh, so the average group of homeless people that stay there all day, what is their average day like? When they wake up in the morning?
That, that, that's really, an average day for a, a homeless guest.
Do they, you know, they just lay in their cot all day, or?
So, so, sometimes, um, they, they, we have a common area, we have outdoor smoking area. Uh, they're gonna have meetings, right? So they're gonna, there's gonna be case management meetings that they may attend. Um, they may have appointments to attend to, to, to go, you know, go, go get a document or go to the doctor.
Right, if they gotta go to court, or they gotta go get a document, then you shuttle, they get shuttled to where they gotta go. I get that, but, but.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Alright. Do, I don't know, I, I know that that goes on, I know that, you know, you have case managers come in, and then, there's gotta be times where somebody could just be sitting there for, you know, three or four days, just eating and sleeping and, and not doing anything other than just being sheltered, right?
That, that, that's correct. I, I think that, so there's, uh, we, we do our job to be persistent with, with our guests, right? So we, we're gonna always be active to engage them and, and encourage them to, to, to move on, right? But the, to some degree, uh, yes, it's on, it's incumbent on, on our shelter guests to, to, to follow up and do that action as well. Um, so our, we view our role as, it's our job to be persistent and to provide the opportunities and connect them to, uh, you know, to, to, to make a plan with them. We, you know, we can't, we don't force them to, you know, you have to leave the shelter at this time of the day, or, uh, there's not like, um, like a strict structure.
Right, there's not, yeah, okay, there's not a schedule where you, they leave or whatever. Come and go as they please, do they sign in and out?
Yes.
They are signed in and out. And, uh, if they have pets, do the, and they leave, do they leave with their pet, or they leave the pet there, and?
They, they leave with their pets.
They leave with, they always leave, they're always, because there gotta be, watch their pets. Does anybody ever get kicked out for not following the rules?
Yeah, we've had, uh, we have, we've had to exit folks for, for non-compliance.
Would you say that's a, a lot, or is it just very seldom?
Um, I wouldn't say it's a lot, but I wouldn't say it's very seldom either. I think we, it, we, we work really carefully with each of our guests to, you know, to try to intervene before it gets to the point of an exit, but, you know, sometimes, you know, behaviors are, are unsafe or something like that. We work pretty closely with Joel's team in those cases too, if we need, uh, public safety to come, uh, come and help.
Say you have a housed individual that has a job, and, you know, it's a, it's a job, and, and you can't find housing for him, and he makes enough money to probably feed himself, him herself or whatever, and, but you can't find housing on it, and if you had the money to offset the housing, could, would that help? If you had money for housing?
Um, so I wanna say, uh, yes, but to that. So yes, that, that would help. I think that's, we would view that as a separate program type from the shelter.
Where I'm going with this is, we're spending two point four mil- million a year to house approximately just under fifty. And that's about fifty thousand in a person. If we cut it in half, would there be a chance of taking that twenty-five thousand dollar savings and subsidizing rent somewhere? Because we could, we could sure get a lot of people exited if that would work.
So I, I think that there's a, a question of, uh, like, there's a, there's an economy of scale when it comes to a shelter operation. And I think that, uh, the fifty bed size is, uh, smaller on the shelter size. Uh, but it's the appropriate size of shelter for a city the size of Bellflower.
As you, one of the questions, say we expanded it to a hundred, would the cost go dramatically? Would it be incremental?
I, I think it would be incremental. Uh, we, that we, if we expand it to a hundred, I'd have to sit down and do the analysis, but we, the cost would go up and not, uh, it wouldn't, it wouldn't double, for example.
So pursuant to, um, Mr. Dutton's comments on this, so, what is, do you know the average income of a person staying in your shelter? They get some kind of assistance somewhere. There is some economic trail that follows these people. Do you think it would make sense to charge a fee after a certain period of time if they're gonna stay? I mean, if they're, if they're gonna live there for a year, does it make sense that they would charge the fee?
I, I hesitate to, so, we try really hard not to mix up.
I understand what you think, I'm just asking, would it be doable if we decided we wanted to do that? Because it sounds to me like some folks are subsidizing other folks, which isn't necessarily right, where that goes. Don't answer the question.
Well.
Second, the second.
I, I think we're moving in the transitional housing model.
Agreed, so that's exactly what we're doing. And that's kind of what I'm thinking. So here's my question to you. It looks to me, because, I mean, we came in and we did this, we didn't know how to do this. This is all brand new stuff to us, and we were one of the first, certainly, one of the first in LA County to do this. We went out and we interviewed, um, providers such as yourself and, and what's, Illumina, what's the other, it doesn't matter, but, we picked Mercy House. So, do you think it's fair to say that we built an Orange County model here in LA, and we don't have the support services on the backside in LA County with the Orange County model? Does that seem like what seems to be happening here?
That seems fair, yeah.
So, it sounds to me like going forward, we have to look at what's gonna work in LA County, and what's realistic there, and I think that's it. So, it's easy to look back after the, after this operation for a couple of years and say, oh, you know, this doesn't seem right, but we're kind of learning. We've learned a lot as we've gone over the last couple of years, and I think that's what we need to think about going forward. You know, so, I don't know, it's just.
Well, I, I, I think in fairness to Mercy House, I think they've done a wonderful job in the shelter itself.
I'm not critical of the operations.
I think the problem is, they're not exiting enough, uh, to permanent supportive housing. I think that, that's the main issue, which is not their, well, it's part of their job, but it's not even their responsibility.
Let's be clear, LASSA has failed miserably in providing that sort of housing, you know, in this, in this program, and it's, it's very frustrating, and we've made our objections known throughout. The thing I wanna clarify before we go forward too much, we spent, you had the number of what we spent totally and what we've gotten in grants. It's not that this is a total loss leader, we've actually recovered a fair amount of money in grants over the last couple of years, so.
So through May twenty, twenty twenty-three, the total cost we're looking at since inception that we spent on the shelter is about nine point six million dollars, which includes construction, correct? So in grant funding, we've received about four point two million dollars in grant funding. So that includes the permanent local housing allocation grants, state grant, and then also county grant funds as well. So, we're about five point five roughly, uh, in non-grant funding, so city general funding.
From general funds, okay.
But if you back out the construction costs, we're looking at what, just, just?
Construction costs were about two million.
Right, so you're looking at recovering four and a half out of seven million dollars on that. So, it's not, it's, it's been painful, but it's not as painful as it seems from the outset on this.
And, and for the current year, we got a half a million dollar funding.
Right.
From the county.
Yes.
So that's only, so if we stay at two point five, so it's two million dollars out of general funds.
Yep.
But we're still, still spending two point four.
Right.
The years are average. Here.
And following up with a question from, um, Councilmember Dutton, um, i- is it kind of, would you say that the shelter is kind of peaceful within?
Peaceful within?
Yes, within.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say the, the operations are smooth, um.
There's not a lot of troublemakers within the shelter?
We, we, uh, we have challenging clients from time to time, but we address them.
Okay, and then, um, have you gotten any complaints for the, from the neighbors?
Uh, we had some.
Recently?
Not recently. Early on, there was issue with the lights that were, they were too bright, but, uh, none that I'm aware of.
So it's the beginning, like that, okay, not lately. Alright, any other question for, for Tim?
I have one.
Oh, Councilmember Coops.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a, a, a statement, you know, with the, you know, the, spending the fifty thousand dollars per person for the year, or the two point four. That's like eight twenty-four hour patrol cars. That's a lot of extras, you know? That, and that's a lot of, uh, sheriff work. I mean, that's a lot of money.
Yep.
You know, I mean, they're always, they're always short there, you know? I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, then I'd look at twenty-five thousand dollars, I'd rather give that to Chrissy to help find rent for someone.
Oh, yeah, I'd rather, you know.
That's two thousand a month.
Paying down, yeah, paying down on somebody's rent to get them off the street, you know? And I would, I would tend to think that, you know, not everybody that went to housing fails. And if they have a job, or, you know, they're always gonna, you know, they, you know, they go, they're gonna better themselves, better themselves, and, you know, I don't wanna think it's forever. I'm sure it's gonna be for a long, tall, you know, a long road, but can't be forever.
I, I think one thing that is easy to miss, um, is what, what is the cost of those folks, uh, being on the street? Right, so if, uh, but for the shelter, uh, many of these folks would be, uh, on, on the streets in Bellflower. Um, there's an impact there, both, not, not only to them and their lives, but to the citizens of Bellflower, the businesses that are impacted. And fifty thousand dollars is a lot per person, but there's, the, the, the cost of a homeless person, you know, on, in your bus stops and in your stoops is also, is also substantial.
And they're still there. Those that went away haven't went away, that's, these are the people that want help.
Are you next?
Go ahead, I'm done.
Uh, just one more question, Timothy. Um, does, does Mercy have, Mercy House operate, or have they ever partnered to do those mini homes?
Uh, we.
In Orange County?
We don't operate any, uh, mini home programs right now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coops.
Do you find the clientele in Orange County, or as comparison to LA County, where, where the only ones you're operating, needier or have more challenging? Or is, there, are there degrees of homeless characteristics?
I, I will say so anecdotally, uh, this isn't based on an analysis of the, you know, uh, grievances or something. The, the different populations at the different shelters, uh, come with different, um, different attitudes, different, uh, different levels of, uh, or different ways that they engage. Uh, I, I think some of our more, uh, more needy, uh, clientele do come from, uh, some of our, or, I think of a couple shelters come to mind right away, uh, where the shelter clientele is really particular. Um, and I'll say Bellflower is not one of those shelters.
I wondered if the economics of Orange County as compared to what LA County are, whether that had impact as well as to... But one thing I, I think that we kind of missed in the testimony, I, I know you have jurisdiction over eleven, twelve homes, and, but many of the questions, I counted eight of them, you could not answer because you're not directly affiliated with our home. I'd like to have some testimony from those that are operating the home locally, that could answer the questions, like Mr. Dutton said, how is the, what's going on in there? How, how many people are laying in their bunk all day? How many are doing that? There are no way that you would know all that stuff. Do, do you have access to someone who can answer those questions?
So our, uh, program manager, Allison Sanchez, is here. Wanna come answer some questions?
I think she could give us a better idea of what our facility's about. So how long you been there?
Uh, since we opened.
Alright, day one. So you've seen, everybody that ever arrived and everybody that departed has been on your watch?
Yes, sir.
And those that come and, uh, stay, you work with them how often to make sure that they're getting the kind of treatment to try to advance their position in life? How often does that occur?
So, we do expect them to meet with our housing navigator at least once a week.
Okay, and you have three housing navigators?
Two, two housing navigators and then a supervisor who's not there full-time.
So we have two people that are being supervised by a third person?
Yes.
Okay, does the, uh, the fact that we don't have transitional housing, is, do you agree with what we're discussing here? We've kind of come to a dead end, we, we're housing the ones we wanna, and it's open to everybody, but what do we, how do we help them beyond the shelter?
Yeah, I'm not sure that transitional housing is the term I would use, I would just say affordable housing, um.
I think he's using the words interchange.
Sure, okay, yeah.
A place to go where they can continue their life, how's that sound?
Right, yes, um, I, I do think that, like, a lack of inventory or access is the main issue with our lack of, um, positive exits, yes.
You know, one of the things we're gonna discuss as we go forward here, and I think some of these questions have been answered, we could receive more income from the county if we open it up to the surrounding cities.
Sure.
And I guess that's a noble thing to help other cities with their homelessness problem, but, yeah. I mean, I'm just throwing a big net here. You know, to get people off the street no matter where they live, and the, the individuals who live in our home or in our homeless shelter are not, I don't think they always know that it's a Bellflower deal, you know? Like what Bellflower Downey, I mean, it's just the region.
I mean, the folks that are going into the shelter now have to have some ties to Bellflower.
And that's still the case?
Yeah, it's still the case.
So if we were to expand the shelter like we can discuss, would there be a benefit or is only we're making the situation more tedious because there's no place for them to go when we conclude?
Likely the latter, but would offset some of our costs. I mean, we've, I mean, we can get into this if you want to start now or you want to conclude this, then we could start about that discussions we've had with our surrounding cities on that.
Well, I think it's interconnected pretty easily.
Yeah, I mean, so we've had, I mean, I, we've had three or four conversations with the city managers of the surrounding cities. And what we're talking about specifically is Lakewood, Paramount, Artesia, to allow members into our shelter from those communities. Honestly, we're sort of hesitant to do that and have been because frankly, those cities don't have a lot of skin in the game as far as what services they're providing. And I certainly don't want to be considered as the place where we're gonna house a portion of their homeless. Although our shelter is currently fifty beds, it's about ninety-something percent full. The funding that the county is looking, the, the last thing that I'd heard from Travis when he talked to the county, the CAO's office on that, they're offering one point four million dollars in a one-time funding, no guarantees of additional funding in future years, for up to seven beds a night when we drop below ninety-five percent. So what that says is that in our current, in our current operations, the majority of the time, we are below ninety-five percent, barely, but we're below it. Which means that if we take that funding, we have to open up to seven beds for those folks from outside the city. I just don't think that's good public policy, quite honestly, especially when our friends, and look for friendly with all of them. But honestly, they're not providing any programs to offset homelessness in any way, form, shape or form that I can see. And our discussions are especially frustrating in that front because they think it's all best that we just house it for them because we've got a shelter, we put it in place, and we're gonna do it. And that's not something that seems tenable to me, but again, that's something that we were gonna discuss tonight with the council, to see how the council felt about that, because my opinions are strong, but they're not necessarily what the policy's gonna be. You guys do that. So that's kind of where it stands with the county and, and expanding that shelter. Now, we could, there is plenty of room to expand that shelter. We could probably add thirty beds in there pretty easily. But I'm not certain that's the best public policy, especially given the failures at LA County at the county level.
Now, would thirty beds connotate changing and improving and expanding bathrooms, kitchen, laundry, or is that all in place?
All of it. You'd probably look at another, at least another million and a half dollars in construction to make that work.
So it's a break even at best if you.
If we expanded it that far. But what we were looking at under the current, because quite honestly.
But then you're gone.
The housing, the housing specialist from Supervisor Han's office is adamant that we take this money. He really wants to give us the money. And they're trying to find a way we can do it. The sticking point right now is that I'm not really interested in taking homeless persons from those three surrounding cities when I don't believe they've done a heck of a lot to help themselves out as far as what their homeless problems are. And that's pretty frustrating to me. But again, that's just my opinion. So, I mean, that's kind of where it stands right now at this moment, unless I hear something different tonight.
Did we promise or intimate that to the citizens of Bellflower, it would be strictly for the citizens?
Yes.
That have affiliation with Bellflower?
We did.
Yes, we did, we said that.
Yeah.
I can attest to that.
That's a court order from the judge.
We got yelled at a lot to say that.
So that, I'm reminded of that as we consider it.
Well, I'm not considering, that's for the record.
Look, yeah.
I'm not considering expanding, okay? I'm just for saying for the record right now.
Yeah.
I'm not even looking at expanding, okay?
That's been my opinion. If we were going to think about that, we do have to do a heck of a lot more education with the residents that we haven't done yet. And I'm, I just don't think we're there.
I don't think Victor minds.
I, I think he does it. I think he would.
Well, my, my biggest problem is we're gonna even take care of the fifty to get out. If we, if we increase the capacity, it's gonna be more, okay? And I don't see any need right now for Bellflower to expand.
One hundred percent, I agree with that, yeah.
Right. And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just throw my, my thoughts on this out there. Expanding it, definitely not a go. However, if the surrounding cities and the county and LSA can get it together and we built some type of level of supportive housing, not on the shelter, not where their current location's at, somewhere else within our city, and we can kill multiple birds with one stone, meaning we take a, a, a location that's a current issue, we build something beforehand. At completion, then maybe we consider, we, we do that ninety-five percent thing.
I think that's fair.
With the existing numbers.
And it's defensible, but Mr. Seis will verify. I don't think we heard any willingness to do that anywhere in our discussions that we've had with them. As a matter of fact.
I don't want to put the, the cart before the horse.
As a matter of fact, one of the suggestions was, well, you guys have the perfect locations to do that in your city. It's, it's actually pretty insulting, like, like the better word.
Or a better, another idea is why don't we encourage them to build affordable housing in their cities so we can partner with them?
Or that as well. And of course.
I'd rather have that, that they're done, everything is in Bellflower.
Honestly, it'll fall on deaf ears. We've had this discussion multiple times and they just don't want any part of it. They, they don't know what they're gonna do, but they're not gonna do what we think they should do. Let's put it that way.
So it sounds like we can put to bed the part about expanding. I feel as you do.
I don't think.
I, and the mayor has already said what he believes. Mr. Dutton, what do you think?
I want more sheriff cars.
So I will, I will tell you that makes it a lot easier for me because that's exactly what I've been representing with the county and the surrounding cities. You guys would never go along with that.
But then as we discuss this homeless situation, we can take that out of the parameter.
Right, okay. So I guess we can focus now on, how do we move forward for the next four years?
That's a sigh of relief.
I guess that's the question.
Yes. So I think today, I said, look, I frankly think Mercy House has done a fine job. What happened was we built a model that we saw in Orange County because that's the only thing we knew. I think there's more models now. I think it would behoove the city council to issue an RFP for services. Obviously, Mercy House would be a bidder, I would hope so, because their services have been fine. It's just the model that's presented may not work for us going forward, and we should seek bids. So at least we could represent to the taxpayers that we're, we're doing this as efficiently as we can.
I think that's the right thing to do. Now, given the timing, Mr. Stewart, one of the items you reported is they want to extend it to June thirty?
Correct. Yeah, to coincide with the fiscal year.
Will that give us enough time to do?
I would, actually, if I had my druthers, I'd rather extend to September thirtieth to give us the time to do that. I think, I think.
Okay, we're thinking more along that line.
I spoke with the CEO, and I think we're okay with that, because especially since I think Mercy House, knowing this operation and knowing what we want to do, and not necessarily disagreeing with us, I think they'd be a very definite bidder on this process.
And that will also coincide with the date of the settlement agreement anyway.
Correct. Right, I think that works.
In terms of timing, all the stars will be aligned.
Yeah, I think so.
What do you think of that, extending to September thirty?
I'm, I'm good with that.
So we can get an RAP and then?
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that. I think my hesitation right now is really more on the previous conversation. I, I, I don't know if I want to just drop that, that conversation, you know what I mean? I, I, I hear our city manager, I hear Jeff saying that it would fall on deaf ears, but I feel that we need to. We're, we're gonna, at the end of the four years or at the end of this, doing this whole over again, we're gonna come with, we're gonna have the same result, guys.
That option is still always open.
Okay.
And, and obviously, Mr. Sulech is not gonna let us ignore that. He's gonna keep pushing on us to do this. And, and frankly, I'm glad he does. He does a good job with that. And I think that conversation still needs to be had. But as, as far as moving forward over the next fiscal year or so, I think we need to go forward with this and can ta- carry on with the conversations with the county and our neighboring cities with their way to go forward. Because, look, we're friends, we all have the same needs. I think that their political situation's a little bit different than ours. I guess a little bit harder for them. So I think that's what they need to get through.
But I just don't want Jeff to take the initiative. I think it should be up to them, take the initiative.
Oh, I don't mind taking the initiative. I mean, as far as that goes, I don't.
To open this?
Yeah.
I, not to open the shelter, not to.
No, no.
Uh, not to expand the shelter.
But if, if we're looking at.
Well, expanding is.
With communication.
No, no, no.
Expanding right now is off the table.
Let me start by saying, my goal is to get the additional grant funding. If there's a way we could do that in a way that's acceptable to us, I, I'm okay to do it. But I want some guarantee that it's not just one-time funding. I don't want to drop a lot of money into construction for any kind of potential expansion if I'm getting one-time money. And two, I want to make sure that our neighbors are playing ball. It's just that simple.
Well, in terms of the additional one point four million dollars?
Yeah.
I have another idea. I'll talk to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I mean, look, I, it's not, as far as taking the initiative, I, I don't really have to. The county's gonna do that for us. Will I respond to them? Yes, I will.
Okay, all right.
Chrissy wants to say something.
Uh, hold on. How about CityNet? We haven't spoken with them yet. Do you want to bring CityNet? Do you have any question of CityNet? They spend their time coming here, so can you come forward? I want, I, I just want to start with our service providers for now, directly on the, on the shelter. So can, can you tell us what, how things are going for you in terms of your work in relation with the homeless and the shelter?
Yes, so my name is Jessica Avilar Bruce, and I'm the chief program officer with CityNet.
If you can sign in.
Yes.
Jessica, please.
Um, things are going well. You have us on a limited contract, so we're not here a ton of hours. So that does limit our ability to build rapport with clients and keep them, you know, the flow going into the shelter. But our relationship with Mercy House and Kingdom Causes, that's going great. Um, we work closely with them, getting people into the shelter when we are here, but we are on a limited contract. So we're only here like eight hours a week right now.
Okay. You've heard the discussion. Do you have any input in terms of how we can move forward? How can we move our shelter guests to a more permanent housing?
Yeah, the only thing I can suggest is going to LSA and, and stating that, you know, you brought a shelter online. So why are they not prioritizing people in shelter? That's what we did in Orange County and other regions I work in, is that they prioritize the shelter residents to go into the next phase of housing rather than it just kind of being prioritization by, you know, the VI SPDA and the numbers that they're hitting. So I would go back to LSA and have a conversation and talk to them about, hey, we came, you know, we came, we saw we had an issue. We decided to bring resources on, but as a county, can you help and support us by prioritizing our people now? Because we've got system flow, and now we have, you know, a bottleneck because we have nowhere to go. Um, we're having the same problem with, I, we work in seven cities now in LA County, and we're having the same problem with a bottleneck of getting people into PSH. A lot of our clients have been on the streets for a lot of years, so they're not gonna be able to get a job, you know, make, you know, a, a wage that is going to be able to sustain their own apartment or even a room for rent now. A room for rent now is a thousand dollars a month, and a lot of people can't afford that. So, you know, bringing in new resources for housing is definitely the way that, you know, we should be looking. Um, you know, cities should be looking at, you know, doing the shelter and then bringing on permanent housing and then kind of phasing out the shelter. That should be always the goal to like, you know, so that we have system flow. Selling, you know, getting money from LSA and expanding, I would be very careful about that, and I warn you, because what happens is, is that you put, if you take their dollars, I'm, you know, I'm working with the city of Whittier, don't, that's not doing it. Because you take their dollars, then they can bring anyone from any spot and transfer them over.
We have no interest in that.
Yeah, so just know, you'll be importing clients, so.
When she says PSH, she means permanent supportive housing, which is, okay.
Yeah, I've worked with, with LSA, so I know, I know.
Yeah, so that's a challenge. But we're having the same challenge. We run two, uh, we run two tiny home shelters in Baldwin Park right now, and we're having the same system flow out of the shelters. You know, as a provider, all we can do is get them, you know, VI SPDA doc ready and as far as we can, and then work with them on other things like, you know, getting, you know, benefits, social security and such. But, you know, I, I feel for Mercy House. We're in the same boat because you can only take a client so far. Because there's no other bucket of money over here that we can just be like, we can put you in housing, and you in housing, and you in housing.
I want to be clear, we, we have no criticism of Mercy House.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, so, I mean, I, as, as, as also a shelter provider in LA County, though, I'm just saying that we're, you know, it's this, across the region.
Let me ask you, in your other cities, are you collecting any funds from folks, homeless folks that you're sheltering uh, through whatever assistance they get or whatever jobs they have or something, or is that just a non-starter?
It's, it's pretty much a non-starter. Um, I've not seen any shelters do that, that model before.
The second thing I have to ask is, on the tiny home projects that you're familiar with, those are just basic temporary shelter. They're not permanent supportive housing, the tiny homes?
No, but Montebello has a permanent supportive housing tiny home shelter that they do, yeah. It's called LifeArc.
Is that the one you were thinking of? Okay.
Yes, yes. We work really close with Paul Joe there also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, any, any question?
I have questions.
Councilmember Coops.
So when we first engaged CityNet, I was under the impression they were mostly, you know, boots-on-the-ground outreach, those on the street. Now, you mentioned that you're actually probably in the same business as.
Mercy House.
Mercy House. So have you changed your model a little bit, or are you always been in that business?
No, we've expanded. So when we first started, we were only, we were basically street outreach. But when the non-congrat models came out, we just fell in love with it. Um, we just feel like it gave our clients that, you know, the humanity that they needed to be able to come in and have their own space alone. So we kind of just jumped onto that model, and, and that's where we've just went from there. So now we're opening up, you know, non-congrat shelters from Sacramento all the way down to Chula Vista. Just because it's just a different setting. Um, you know, with, you're working with high acuity clients, taking them into a congrat shelter is hard. And that's kind of what you have right now in Bellflower, we see, is that some of those clients, those everyday ones that we've been working with for three years and, and you guys have, it's like they won't go into a congrat setting.
Let me ask you, is congrat shelter, you mean like warehousing?
Yes.
The open beds and all that. So congrat sheltering is individual homes or something like that?
Uh, non-congrat, yeah, is it your own, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, so my question is, so, and, and you support that because you just think it's more humanitarian and?
And as a street outreach organization, it's easier for me to sell that to a client than it is just, you know.
Is that, is that a good expenditure of taxpayer dollars?
It's, there's, the cost, there's not a real huge cost difference between non-congrat and congrat setting.
Well, you'll have to explain that to me someday.
We'll have to meet, it's a longer conversation. I mean, you know, so it's just, you know, it's just a different model that just came out, you know, pre-COVID. Um, you know, Judge Carter, he was the one that brought the, the, uh, the, uh, the tiny shed from Home Depot and put it in the parking lot in Anaheim Stadium. So he wanted that model, and now it's kind of grown to this huge model.
I think there's a little bit of a disconnect to his expectation of what really happens in the world too, slightly, but that's okay. That, he means, well, it's all good. But, yeah, okay, because I mean, I mean, we're learning, every day we learn something more about this. And I think the model's changed pretty dramatically in the last couple of years, but, and it's kind of confusing for us. And that's why it's a good, this is a good point in time to stop and take stock of what we're doing and how, so.
Yeah, and then I think the other, I mean, the only other thing I should suggest is that we can't have just one type of shelter, one type of, uh, permanent housing bed. We have to have, you know, multitude of different options for people. So some people love the congrat model because they like to be around a community, like to be involved in it. Some people don't, they want their own space. So, you know, anything you can do to put in your toolbox, you know, different options for people, that's gonna make the city more successful.
One last question. But so as far as your interactions with LSA, do they have any plans to create permanent supportive housing? Or is this just sort of a, a goal?
Um, they, they do. It seems like more of it's, I mean, from what I've, I mean, I'm reading the same thing you guys. I mean, we're not hearing it in the meetings, but it seems like the majority of the resources and services are going to the city of LA right now, and that's where the focus is.
City of LA is a different funding source. I'm talking about the measure age funds.
Yeah, but it seems even through with, it just seems like we're not, everything's not reaching us out here because we're like in Whittier, El Monte.
So are you saying measure age funds are going into downtown LA?
I, I don't know, but I just know that we are not getting them in our other cities out here.
Well, we're getting them.
Yeah, nothing. And just even through the coordinate entry system, the matches, you know, I'm hoping that you're gonna have much more, better data from the matches. But we're putting, our, our goal isn't a street outreach organization and our shelters, it's just to get them VI SPDA into the system. And hopefully, they're finally, they're gonna get picked.
We need to talk.
Okay.
How many years is Brad Fieldhouse, was he here five years ago? Four years ago?
I think it's been four years, yeah.
And so at that point, he had sixty-five employees. What do you have now?
Uh, two hundred and forty and seventy-five openings.
Okay.
And we were in two counties, then now we're in seven, so.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, we do, we are, yes. We do hire people with lived experience. Yes, lived experience people are amazing.
He's the president.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. Joel, can we complete the cycle here? I just want to talk about service calls. I just thought about it. Has there been a lot of service calls related to the shelter?
Oh, I can answer that question for sure.
Yeah, I'm sure you'd.
I cannot remember the last complaint we had from outside sources to the substation regarding a homeless shelter. I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know calls that might have taken place, per se. But normally, we get notified of emergency responses, and there are a few. Uh, there's been a couple related to somebody misbehaving and then not wanting to leave properly and so forth. But if I were to compare complaints from the neighborhood in the last six months, I don't know of any. Emergency calls to the sheriff related to bad behavior that I'm aware of, three, maybe?
Over the last, over the last two years?
Oh, no, over, over the last six months.
The last six months, okay.
My memory doesn't go back to two years, actually. And then there's.
I was almost impressed, though.
But there are some medical calls once in a while regarding emergency response from medical personnel.
That's a different category.
Sure.
All right. So it's relatively peaceful, so to speak.
That's my impression.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've got evidence that I could dig up if we really had to look regarding calls and such. But this is going off memory and working with staff. Normally, we'll talk to each other if a call comes in of this sort because we know it's an interest, facility of interest.
Okay, great.
Mr. Mayor.
Glad to hear that. Councilmember Coops.
Joel, are you still conducting the meetings with the neighborhood around the shelter?
No, actually not. Uh, we took some time off originally during the holidays, and then we were waiting to see if there was any demand for that meeting to take place because what we were finding is there was, in some cases, nobody coming from the community. It would be a room with service providers in it, we're all kind of talking to each other.
Yeah, Reverend Gartley, that's about it.
And so what happened was we said, well, if, if anyone wants to meet, you know, let us know and so forth, and we kind of just haven't heard. So it's just kind of on suspended animation for now.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Any question of Joel?
No, I'll just piggyback and report that there had, I haven't had any complaints regarding the shelter from any of the residents in that area.
All right, thank you. All right, I guess. Chrissy, you're next.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chrissy Padilla.
Chrissy Padilla-Burkey with Kingdom Causes Bellflower. Um, I was just taking some notes and wanted to provide some LA County contacts, as far as I know. I know Councilmember Dunton gets some of the cog, Gateway Cities cog updates as well. Um, but just wanted to clue you into some of the, um, some of the things that we've heard. It is a very rapidly moving, um, issue in LA County. As you know, Measure H is like definitely under, um, critique, um, for, for good reason. Um, and so the rules have all changed. Like July of this last year, the rules changed, outreach changed, and one of the biggest things that the, the county has done through Lhasa, through the, the housing initiative as well, is said, okay, we're actually gonna pull out from doing a lot of the street outreach because our shelters are clogged right now, right? There's not, there, people are not moving through it, which is what we're talking about today. Um, so what they said is, we're gonna prioritize as many of the permanent housing resources, vouchers, so that it's flowing through the shelters. Now, when that happened, they were not including city-only shelters, so New Hope was not included on that. Um, that also meant for Kingdom Causes Bellflower, who's had outreach contracts through path with, um, through cog and through path with Lhasa, um, that our street outreach basically got eliminated, like with a month's notice. What we were able to do was make the argument that there are enough people here at the New Hope Shelter that Lhasa should earmark a position within KCB, because we already have the relationships with, with Mercy House, with CityNet, and with those homeless neighbors who we've been working with for a long time. So we were able to get them to change the rules slightly so that we were able to have a designated housing navigator who only can work with shelter participants in the New Hope Shelter. So we've had a pretty good partnership with, with Mercy House over the last little bit, trying to provide additional housing navigation support. Um, I, just to echo what people are saying and what it sounds like you guys all know, if there's no place to exit people, you know? And, and I will say, I was a critic of, of this idea to start. I think most of you guys know that. I had concerns with the rhetoric and why we were doing this and how, if it would be sustainable, but I, I am happy to say I was wrong to some, I was wrong, for the record. Um, I have seen this shelter work for some of the hardest-to-house neighbors that are your everyday people that you saw for years in downtown Bellflower. Those are some of the people that we were able to house, because they did get the stability that they needed in the shelter. And credit to, to their housing navigation there at the shelter and to KCB, because twenty, we were able to house twenty people that went through the shelter. So I don't know where our numbers are off, because I actually think you guys have done more. We've housed twenty people that were part of, they were in the shelter and they're now, um, out in their own housing. They've maintained it. A lot of them are older adults, fifteen, uh, sixty at least. What's that? I know, I know, I'm like, I'm forty-one, so older adult is a weird term, but yes. Um, and the reason I know that is because we have grants with United Way and Kaiser specifically earmarked towards older adults, and we've seen a real sweet spot with helping the shelter participants get into permanent housing. Um, I think, so I think paying attention to like, i- if, yes, Lhasa is messy, the county is messy right now. Homelessness is really, really politicized and, um, the whole system is being overturned right now. But I think it might, it wouldn't be good for the city to get rid of the shelter, because that is where the resources are supposed to be prioritized. Versus, if somebody is out on the street, they're gonna have less of a chance to get those resources. Something else that I observed is, um, and this impacted actually some clients, our neighbors that we have in common with Mercy House. Um, the county did commit a bunch of those vouchers that said, okay, we've matched somebody. These are people that are the most chronically homeless, we've matched them with a voucher, so you just need to go find an apartment that is willing to rent with them. KCB at that point had some grants that we were able to leverage to help with first month's rent or deposit, and I know Mercy House also has access to some of those resources. And then the county, so we shared the news, started doing the apartment search, even went as far as to start signing leases, and then the county called back a bunch of those vouchers and said, just kidding, we overcommitted and we no longer have the funding for that. And so that's kind of the landscape that we're working with, where there is really, there isn't a lot. But even though the numbers are stark and you, you look at how many people have gone through, how many people are staying, to me, and I don't have the data, but it does feel like it's on par with what is, what is average. And just looking at the actual personal faces that I know, this has been a pretty big game changer for people that I don't think we're, we're ever gonna get off our streets in Bellflower. So, I, I think you're asking good like cost benefits analysis questions that are valid, uh, but I want to make sure you guys know that like, sometimes the hardest people to help that KCB has failed at trying to get off the streets for years. This has been the missing piece that gave them the stability so that they were able to move on. Um, a couple more things that I wanted to speak to is that Good Soil has employed at least five of the workers there. Um, it may be more, I didn't get that specific statistic, apologies. And that's a partnership that we're looking to double down on. We love that, and we see that, um, you know, as we hire somebody, if they have somewhere safe to sleep at night, their ability to show up for work and to start thinking and feeling like they're actually worthy of getting a good job and getting housing, maybe getting their kids back, really goes up. And so, um, I would love to see that continue. Um, I do want to speak to the fees. We, we run a small hospitality home for families called Margaret's House. We, we don't call it a shelter. It's a hospitality home, more of a transitional home, and we do charge fees. Um, however, what we found is there's a lot of long-term resources that are disqualified if somebody is paying what can be perceived as rent. So you'd have to just make sure you understand what are the main types of resources that are gonna help one of those, um, shelter participants to get into permanent housing and would pay. I like the idea of exchange, I think it gives somebody like skin in the game, but you have to make sure it doesn't disqualify them from something that's actually gonna help them move on, but it is something to explore. Um, the, the last thing I want to speak, uh, two more things. Um, one is just a, a personal, our request on behalf of KCB. We are not officially contracted to do this with you guys. We are, we are listed as a referral agency, and at that time, we did have a, a grant through the Gateway Cities cog that we were able to leverage to do that outreach, to be a partner. Those grants have all changed in the last couple of months, and that has ended. And so we are now in a position where about ninety percent of our phone volume are related to re, uh, uh, intake for the shelter. Before, I was able to leverage other dollars to, to get that, but we are now doing that barely. And, um, I think it's because we have a brick and mortar location, so we become a tangible person. And I'm not familiar with what the other call, uh, call volumes are, or what the statistics are, but I would say that we're probably one of the main referring agencies, and we do a lot of the paperwork and intake. A lot of that is, is okay, because we have that staff member that's, that's, um, that is earmarked to do housing navigation in partnership with them, but that doesn't pay our reception, our phone bills, our intake. And at this point, like, we either need, we need to figure out something, because we can't sustain that right now.
How much did you lose from the cog?
A hundred and eighty-five thousand a year. We've had that for ten years. Um, so everything's changing, all the rules are changing right now. I think the, so that's something like, I, I don't, you know, I'm in my last week at KCB, the next executive director is actually here in the room, so that will probably be a conversation with you guys going forward, which is, what is KCB's role with this? We, we love, we've had a great partnership with Mercy House. We've seen things, we've seen people we never thought would get housed, get housed through this. So I would hate to lose that, but we honestly can't afford, because we're out of grants to leverage to do this for the city. The last thing I want to speak to is, you know, that big next conversation. I think most of you guys I've had conversations with, at, at some level, about, I do think collaborating with cities, um, neighboring cities to help make this more sustainable. I think that is a worthy conversation to keep knocking on. I do understand that, yeah, it feels icky if they're saying, let me just pay to put my homeless neighbors in your city. But I do think it is defining what does the city think is the skin in the game that's needed. Because if we're all saying that there's not enough, if there's no permanent housing in place for them to exit, then what does it look like to negotiate with them? So that they, one, pay into the shelter, and two, are also providing those extra, um, housing units and beds. I think, I know it's not easy, but I do feel like, in my, my conversations, there is interest. And so I would definitely urge the city to continue that hard conversation, even if it's not right now. Um, and we're here, we'll continue supporting on the backend as much as possible. We do a housing support group, because a lot of those neighbors who have been on the streets, going to shelter, they get into their apartments and they freak out, because they haven't lived indoors, they haven't had a landlord. They don't know how to deal with bills, it's lonely. We have a support group, um, that we do just to help people, because our hope is that when these neighbors get back on their feet, that they're able to flourish, be a good neighbor, like be an asset to Bellflower, and, and give back and volunteer. And so on the backend, that's something that I, I hope KCB continues to be a part of. Um, I think that's it for my notes. I was trying to keep notes on as, as conversations were going on.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I have a question. I'm glad to hear that, um, the most challenging individuals in the street were able to find some kind of stability, uh, in the shelter.
Yeah.
So what is your opinion, um, in terms of their long-term prospects, so to speak? Uh, what should we do with them?
With the ones that are there the long time?
Yeah, the most challenging ones.
The most challen, the ones that are gonna, mo, I meant most challenging is that, in that they're chronic,